County Board of County Commissioners to order. If I could get Commissioner Powell to do our indication.
If you desire, would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father and Almighty God, may you recognize your power here tonight. Help us to recognize your presence here as well in all decisions that we make, all discussions that we have. May we go about the business of this county in a civil and a Christian manner for the benefit of all the people in our county. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Chairman, stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, is there any discussion or adjustments of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add just a discussion about the Board of Adjustment and Appointment.
We'll make it three forty-one.
Last.
Last. And I would like to, if it's okay with the Board, put into record number three A, our county attorney, Ron Akok, discussing the Sunrock Tunnel Creek Court Appeal that happened on Monday. Are there any other adjustments or discussions?
Before approval, as adjusted.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? All right. It's approved. Recognition, item number one. Person County's youth delegate to attend Youth Voice. Michelle Ferris.
Hello, my name is Michelle Ferris. I'm the new 4-H agent here in Person County. Tonight I have the pleasure of introducing you to Ms. Erin Haines. Erin is seventeen years old and will be a senior this year at Roxboro Community School. Erin started her 4-H journey by showing calves and goats when she was seven years old at the Monastery Farm School. At age eleven, she began attending Electric Congress and has been participating ever since. Erin has attended many 4-H programs such as Winter Fest, Teen Retreat, 4-H Camp, 4-H Congress, North Carolina 4-H Citizenship Focus, and she attended the NCA-CC Youth Summit in two thousand and fifteen. And will be leaving to attend this year's NCA-CC Youth Voice this Friday. Tonight Erin will be speaking to you all about the impact that 4-H has made on her life.
When I was in first grade, my elementary school started a 4-H club in which we got to show cows and goats. I participated in this club throughout elementary school, and when I moved schools, I continued to participate in 4-H as an at-large member. When I was eleven, my 4-H agent at the time, Jennifer Grapple, suggested that I complete in the electricity project record book. This project record book granted me the opportunity to attend Electric Congress. Electric Congress was a very eye-opening experience for me. I got to meet 4-Hers from all over North Carolina, and I made many amazing new friends. These friends informed me of similar events, including Congress, Winter Fest, Teen Retreat, but more importantly, they told me about the NCA-CC Youth Summit. Thank you so much for the opportunity to attend Youth Voice this weekend. I'm looking forward to it.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, just a little history behind that program. About two thousand nine, I think two thousand nine or ten, I was appointed at that time by the then-President Association Mary Acker from Cleveland County to chair a youth committee. And this is what came out of that committee, on how to get our youth involved and learn more about county government. And so each year, we invite a youth from each county, and they come from 4-H, they come from Boys and Girls Clubs and other groups like that in the prospective counties that they're representing. And so we always have a good turnout. Last year, we didn't get to have one to go, so we're glad this year that we have someone that's attending, and look forward to seeing her at the conference this week.
And thank you for your dedication. All right. At this time, we're gonna enter into a public hearing. I would entertain a motion to do so.
Some of them.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Open, this is to consider a request by Pete Duty with the Tri-County Radio Control Club for a special use permit to operate a recreational radio-controlled model airplane flying club on fourteen point oh-three acres off State Road seventeen twenty-one, Mount Harmony Church Road, tax map and parcel number A ninety-eight dash one ninety-one in the rural conservative zoning district. This is a quasi-judicial zoning decision whereby witnesses are to be sworn in and subject to cross-examination, no ex parte communication, and requires finding of fact. If anyone that is signed that wants to speak, if you would, come forward, please, so I can swear the oath.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear of pardon.
That I will tell the truth
That I will tell the truth.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth
The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
As testimony offered in the public hearing
As testimony offered in the public hearing.
For a request by Pete Duty
For a request by Pete Duty.
With the Tri-County Radio Control Club
With the Tri-County Radio Control Club.
For a special use permit to operate
For a special use permit to operate.
A recreational radio-controlled model airplanes
A recreational model controlled airplane.
Flying club on fourteen point oh-three acres
Flying club on fourteen point oh-three acres.
Off State Road seventeen twenty-one, Mount Harmony Church Road
Off State Road seventeen twenty-one, Mount Harmony Church Road.
Tax map and parcel
Tax map and parcel.
A ninety-eight dash one ninety-one
A ninety-eight dash one ninety-one.
In the rural conserva- conservation zoning district.
In the rural conservation zoning district.
All right, thank you. At this time, we have one notarized statement that would like to be entered into record. Is there any opposition to a notarized statement? This gentleman is out of the country and couldn't be here tonight. Do I hear any opposition to entering that into record when it comes time? Hearing no opposition, we'll enter it into record when it comes time. All right, Ms. O'Toole.
Mr. Chairman, while my presentation is loading, I would like to state that all state statutes and zoning ordinance requirements have been met for this public hearing, and I would like to submit my presentation and stack report into the record at this time. New side screen for some reason.
That's fine.
That's fine.
We got it in front and back.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the special use permit request that you have before you tonight is for a private recreational radio-controlled model airplane flying club. And I have the, I have the site plan on the screen, that's coming up on the screen. There we go, in front of you. The property consists of fourteen point oh-three acres, and it is located approximately two thousand feet off of Mount Harmony Church Road. The site plan depicts the proposed parking lot, the grassy airstrip, and the portage john. And the next screen that I have before you is just a blow-up of the gravel parking lot showing the parking spaces and the turnaround area. Next screen shows the recorded plaque that shows the fifty, well, I was going to add it, but the fifty-foot wide access easement that takes you from Mount Harmony Church Road up in the top right corner down to the parcel. To the northeast and west of the site is woodlands, and they are zoned RC. To the south of the site is also woodlands, farmland, and farmland, any single-family dwelling, which is also zoned RC. As I stated, the site is zoned rural conservation, and the proposed recreational radio-controlled model airplane flying club requires the issuance of a special use permit. The applicant is requesting to install a three-hundred-foot-long grassy airstrip for the club to fly model airplanes. The model airplanes range in size, and some of them are powered by battery while others utilize fuel. There is a proposed portage john for the site, and the Person County Environmental Health Department stated that as long as the club is not generating wastewater, then a portage john is acceptable. There is one proposed twenty-by-twenty canopy for the site, as long as it can be permitted through the building inspections department. And I have a picture of the canopy on the screen, it's the one on the right. The applicant has requested to install a gravel parking lot under section eighty-one dash one of the zoning ordinance. Ten nine-by-eighteen parking spaces are required and would be provided. The applicant plans on constructing a ten-foot-wide gravel driveway along the fifty-foot easement from Mount Harmony Church Road to the site. The gravel road would be approximately two thousand feet in length. The property is located within the Tar River watershed area, which allows a maximum of thirty-six percent impervious area, and the applicant is proposing five point eight-six percent of impervious area. I do have some pictures on the screen of model airplanes. This was borrowed from the applicant's Facebook page, so you can see how they range in size. The Person County Land Use Plan identifies the site as rural residential slash agricultural, and that identification does include very limited commercial, office, public, institutional Appendix O of the land use plan lists some of the goals and objectives for the county, which includes the following: to coordinate with other public and private agencies to provide lands, facilities, and programs for the enrichment of leisure activities for the citizens of the county. And six point seven is to encourage private enterprise development of recreational facilities. The property, as I stated, is zoned RC, and the table of permitted uses lists private recreational club or swimming club activities, not operated as a business or for profit as a special use in the RC district. The applicant is requesting to utilize the site to fly model airplanes for their private nonprofit recreational club. The site plan includes the proposed shelter, gravel parking lot, a portage john, and a three-hundred-foot-long grassy runway. Planning staff recommends that if the Board approves the request, that the following condition be placed on me, and that should say special use permit. The applicant is to obtain all necessary permits from the county planning and zoning department and building inspections department. At the July thirteenth twenty-seven meeting of the planning board, the planning board voted unanimously four to zero to deny the special use permit request on the basis that it did not meet findings of fact number one, which is that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved.
The president probably just Twitter charged his firing back after the president went out. Hit Keelwood.
But it also did not meet findings of fact number four, that the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. As a reminder, the Board needs to address the four findings of fact and whether this proposal is in keeping with the county comprehensive plan, and I do have the findings of fact on the screen in front of you. If you have any questions in me at this time, I'll be happy to answer them.
How many people showed up to your meetings to comment?
The planning board meeting?
Yes.
We probably had, I would say, five to six in opposition, and then you had probably eight or so in favor. They were club members that got up and spoke on behalf of the club.
What a debate.
It was, it was a lengthy meeting.
Any other questions?
Fact one in four, was that two separate votes on that, or the all-inclusive, in that four I vote?
So, they voted unanimously on both of those. They didn't meet either of those two.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll move to the comments section in favor of. We're gonna set aside thirty minutes for each side to make their comments. We have three people speaking in favor of, so that's a generous amount of time, ten minutes each. So, Mr. Pete Duty.
I wonder if I can ask, on the PowerPoint, would be a good way for us to start, and that would be another speaker? Would that be all right?
Has he signed up?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Sure. When it comes, so you've given up your time?
You're switching over.
No, I would like to speak after.
Okay, so who's the first one up? Chris.
Chris Sylvia.
Okay, Chris Sylvia, then.
Thank you. If I could have the PowerPoint put on, please.
Go up to the podium, please.
Come on in.
State your name and your address, please.
My name is Christopher Sylvia. I live at three one oh-five Brooms Edge Way during North Carolina. Thank you very much. I would like to, first off, oh, thank you very much. I would like to present for the commissioners, the Tri-County, first off, before I begin, my apologies, thank you very much for this opportunity to present the club and what we do and the nature of the problem or the nature of the situation that we find ourselves in. And you'll be following along on the information that's been presented as well, as you've had a chance to see this before. What is the Tri-County Radio Club, and why are we here? We are an academy of model aeronautics chartered club. This is an organization that is founded a number of years ago. It is a national organization throughout the United States, and a number of clubs belong to this organization, not only here in North Carolina, but throughout all fifty states. Members of this club and of all AMA clubs fly all kinds of model aircraft, ranging in size from very tiny foam airplanes you can hold in your hand, all the way to large-scale warbirds that are reminiscent of those flown in World Wars One and Two, and everything in between. These include airplanes, drones, helicopters, gliders, sailplanes, you name it. Membership of the club is made up of a number of people, of course, from Person County, and we welcome residents from other surrounding counties as well. Currently, we have fifty-five members who are registered in our club. We are open and welcoming to individuals new to the hobby, as well as those who are already practitioners. We provide training and guidance for all aspects of model aviation, whether those individuals have never built an airplane before, or whether they've built them and flown them before. My nine-year-old grandson, in fact, is a member, joined when he was six years old, and flies with the club. Our mission is, excuse me, our mission is to provide a safe environment to fly model, radio-controlled model aircraft that's in harmony with the community and with our neighbors as well. Are also, our mission is to educate members and guests on model aviation. And this includes safety, best practices, construction, safe construction, model airplanes, and operation. An incorrectly-built model aircraft is a hazard, not only to the operator, but to everyone else who's in the area. An incorrectly-operated model aircraft is a hazard to everyone who flies. So, this is very important, that people understand how these things are built correctly, how they're flown correctly, and how you can contribute to the safety of others, and how you can enjoy flying as a result. And to do that, we need a place to fly. We can't do this in parks safely. Really need a place where we can fly that gives us the opportunity to do it well. We also need to be able to provide a venue where people who are members and guests can come share the experience, can come see these planes flown, and frankly, we can share our own enthusiasm for model aviation of all flavors and stripes. We like to support our community as well, as part of our mission, through model aviation, and we say, for example, fundraising events, like the TCRC Fire Flight, which, although you might think that's fundraising for ourselves, it's not. It's actually fundraising for local, in this case, local fire departments. We raise funds and donate them to local volunteer fire departments. We also do youth development programs. For example, I run the Boy Scout Merit Badge, Aviation Merit Badge through the TCRC. We have a number of Boy Scouts who have come through and received their merit badge. We do that in conjunction with a local airport. We also encourage science, technology, math, and engineering through various programs that we offer to Girl Scouts and to other youth organizations with local churches. We also support the open membership to anyone who comes to visit with us, whether they be Person County residents, as well as residents of other surrounding counties. So, you're certainly welcome, even though we are a private club, absolutely. We are not a club that is closed to membership. Anyone can join. So, what is the AMA? We mentioned this early on. It's a nonprofit organization dedicated to the promotion of model aviation. It's recognized by the federal government as the community-based organization that's responsible for making rules and regulations that governs model aircraft use in the United States. All AMA chartered clubs require their members to purchase AMA memberships, and as we require our, all of our club members to be members of the AMA, we require them to follow the AMA Safety Code in order to be club members, and that's very stringent. Our AMA charter number is forty-six thirteen. Individual AMA membership, in fact, required for all flyers, although new pilots can fly under the direct supervision of one of our AMA-registered instructors. Our club president and vice president also, registered with the AMA because of this charter and registered president, vice president, treasurer. So, one of the key learnings that we've had as a club in going through these hearings and interacting with the community is that the sound that our models make, the noise, if you will, that our models make, is a concern. And I think, by and large, we've come to understand this, and we haven't understood it in the past. This has been an important learning for us, and it's something that I think we've come to take, we've come to take to heart. So, I'd like to address that now with this, with this group here today, and with the group in back of us as well. We do want to provide structure. We do want to enforce best practices. There are aircraft noise emission standards that are in play in various states and in various counties and municipalities. And those can be strict, those can be actual numbers, so many decimals, or they can be ad hoc in various municipalities and cities and states. But in some places, these can include aircraft noise emission standards, flying hour limitations, whether self-imposed or required by law, standardized safety practices, which we already have as part of our own rules, defined flight patterns. Do not fly over certain locations. Keep patterns in certain places. Membership meetings and communication channels to address noise and safety issues if they should occur. Those are all important. So, as a result of these hearings that we've had, we did engage in a, we did engage a professional engineer, Mr. Jeffrey Trailer, to measure sound levels of several of our largest model aircraft. These were gasoline or ethanol-based or methanol-based motors, as well as some common lawn care implements, since many people, frankly, like to compare our model engines to weed whackers or lawn mowers, for example. And we have some key findings, which you've also got on some of your, some of your papers. The sound data was taken to summarize this on the next page, if you can see from the findings. Large representative gasoline plane, they also tested a representative relative of conversation, normal conversation, and to music. And they tested this from the center of the runway, and then they moved away various numbers of feet, and then measured the sound level at these various distances. Data from electric-powered airplanes were not collected due to very low sound emissions that these systems generate. So, quite honestly, the gasoline motors are understandably, logically, if you think about it, from the loudest of these, electric aircraft make very little noise, it's only the propellers. So, I'm going to draw your attention, if you will, to the next chart. The key, there are some, couple of key illustrations on this next graph, and I sort of wish I had a laser pointer to sort of go to this.
I do.
Oh, thank you. So, I'm gonna shine this up here for the benefit of the audience, and perhaps this one over here would be more useful.
Mr. Sylvia, you're at nine and a half minutes, just to let you know.
Thank you very much.
You can take as much time as you want, but you're only getting thirty.
This red line here, along the back, this red line is, is conversation. Sixty-five decibels. Along the bottom, we have, at zero, we have the place, the origin, the place at which the noise occurred. As you go to the right, you get further away from the origin of the noise. So, the motor is here, if you will, and you're stepping further and further away from the motor as you go to the right. Here is the sound level. Higher is more intense. So, as you move further and further away from the motor, the intensity of the sound drops off. Makes sense. As you walk further away, it gets quieter and quieter. Meter is moving further away, the noise drops. And the line for conversation is flat because you're talking as you're moving further away. So, it's always the same, because you're simply talking while you're moving further away. So, you're basically the same distance away from the sound meter, whether you're standing close or far. So, the key here is if you move out to here, this top orange line is one of our largest airplanes. It's a hundred cc gas engine. But these other lines down below that are all kind of grouped together, the greens and the dashed and the dotted lines, those are all the lawn implements and our other model aircraft. And what you can see is, they're about as loud as conversation over here around, if you drop down, around a hundred and fifty or so, the two hundred feet thereabouts. So, by the time you are a hundred So by the time you are a hundred and fifty feet away from the source of that noise, by the time you're a hundred and fifty feet away from the weed whacker, it's about as loud as conversation. So if we look at our next page, which is the diagram of our property, what you can see, and once again, I wish this was much more locked, much larger, is that from the center of the property, you have roughly five hundred and some odd feet of width. And you can see these circles, there's a five-hundred-foot circle, that's the first circle you see. Then there's a much larger circle, that's the next circle of diameter out. That's, I believe, a thousand feet of diameter out. But what you can see is that, basically, within the property line, for your weed whackers and your lawn mowers, by the time you reach the edge of our property in any direction, all of our airplanes, with the exception of the hundred cc motor, are no louder than a conversation. So in terms of noise, by the time you reach the edge of our property, even at its least widest point, you're not any louder than a conversation. For our loudest airplane, even for our loudest aircraft, within a six-hundred-and-seventy-five-foot radius, you're still not... From the center of our property, six-hundred-and-seventy-five radius, left or right, you're still as loud as a conversation. We don't have very, very many. In fact, I think we have very few hundred cc aircraft. The vast majority of our aircraft are fifty cc or less. So what are we requesting? To get to the final... We're requesting approval for a recreation permit to allow for the club to develop some dedicated model aviation field in Person County. This property will be used for farming and model aviation. The opportunity to provide a permanent home for TCRC that's owned and managed by the club and provides a recreational asset, not just for us, but for Person County, to fly, basically, toy model airplanes that aren't any louder than a conversation for the most part, and in fact, for ninety-five percent, within the boundaries of the property that we own. So why a club and not just individuals? Well, if we're not approved, we lose the... An opportunity to establish a recreational entity to benefits youth and residents under the aegis of the Academy of Model Aeronautics. We lose the ability to have special flying and fundraising events, really. And the property on Mount Harmony Church Road, Mr. Duddy will continue to develop it, and he is going to have a private RC field for himself. And without the public venue for model aviation, there will be unsupervised flying there by people interested in the hobby, without the experienced trainers, without the guidance, without the safety protocols, which I think would be a loss for the community and which would not be as helpful, perhaps, as it could be. So in closing, I would like to thank the commissioners for their time. I hope I've made a convincing case for TCRC as an entity to be present. I hope we've addressed the sound issues to the extent that we can, and I would like to ask that you consider our case favorable. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we going to ask them a question now, while they get through?
It's entirely up to you.
How far... You're talking about the sound radius, but how far do these... How far will these planes be off of that property? Do they go a half a mile, or... How far do they fly? How far do you have control of them?
Well, how far they fly depends upon how far you allow them to fly. There's a couple of considerations in terms of how far they fly and the sound they generate.
Do they ever get out of sight?
No, no, no. Well, if they get out of sight, you can't operate them, because we fly what's called line of sight. You must fly within the... You cannot let these aircraft leave the line of sight, because you can't operate them out of line of sight. There are people who do own and operate what are called drones that have cameras on them. We've all read about this. This club does not have, nor do we condone, operating any of these kinds of drones, and we don't, we will not allow that to occur, period. And to go back to the original question of operation and sound. When a model aircraft leaves the ground, we begin to operate, and we are required by AMA to operate... Or not required, but we, as suggested by AMA and by the FAA, that we operate our aircraft under a four-hundred-foot level. We can operate above four-hundred foot. We were suggested that we operate under four-hundred foot. That having been said, once, at a four-hundred-foot level, we are, once again, well above that level where we are beyond this conversation, if you will, this conversation zone. So we're out of earshot at four-hundred feet, in any event, no matter where we are, once we're up in the air. So not only are we four-hundred feet away in terms of the distance in the air, but we're certainly well beyond the noise level. We would be at conversation level or lower.
That's this blue line that you have on your chart here, that you went to the middle of the property from Mount Harmony Church Road?
Yes.
Is that where you accessed the property? And is that the property owner's home, or what is that road frontage there?
I'm not actually capable of answering that particular question. I don't have intimate knowledge of that. One of the other speakers would have to answer that question.
Okay. You mentioned its benefits.
Yes, sir.
Based off fundraising and that type of thing. What type of fundraising have you all done when you operated before, and what did it benefit in Person County?
Yes, in TCRC, we operated the Fire Flight. We've operated that several years in a row. We weren't able to operate it this year, and I kind of... These issues that we had. That was an invitational event. We invited individuals... This is a typical kind of event. We have individuals that we advertise this in the AMA magazine, which goes out to individuals all over our country. We don't have people coming from other states, but we have people coming from, I mean, within the state. They typically have a donation that they give to us, and the pilots who come pay a landing fee as well. We've collected hundreds of dollars. That... We also receive donations. We have raffles, so forth and so on. That money's collected, and then the club donates it to volunteer fire departments that are in the area, Caswell County, so forth and so on. That's typically... Those are the typical things we do. Also, the Boy Scouts, we invite a Boy Scout troop usually to do the food part of the event, and that Boy Scout troop is allowed to keep whatever profits they make on the event. We've had a couple of troops that have done that. So that's typically how we run those events. And that's not unusual. Clubs, there are other clubs that do this kind of thing.
Out of your fifty-five members, how many are Person County residents?
Um, I'm... Excuse me, I have to ask one of our... What percentage are...
Roughly twenty percent.
Twenty percent, roughly, I would say. That's not unusual as well. There are few... There are fewer clubs in here. We have clubs in this area, there are probably three or four clubs, but they're geographically very dispersed. These kinds of clubs require relatively large spaces, and it's few and far between, so...
Well, that was my next question. What was the next closest charter AMA club?
Um, there's one in Meven. There's one on the other side of Raleigh. There used to be one out by Jordan Lake. They had to move. They are hours away. So this is the only one in this general area.
Do you all have set dates that you fly, or is it like some member clubs where if you're a member, you just have access to the facility or the, in this case, the property?
Usually, it's when people come. You see, a number of our members are retired. Some prefer to come on Saturdays, some come during weekdays, just depends on what their schedule is. Many come on Sunday. However, because we have a church nearby, we are certainly not going to be flying during the mornings, the early mornings, on Sundays. And that's a reasonable thing to do. We'll probably won't be starting until after nine or ten or something like that, and we may only fly electric, which is quiet during those times anyways. And we want to obviously be considerate of folks during that period of time. So it will be, and people will be coming out and flying, you know, probably Tuesday morning or something like that. We may even have some people flying potentially in the evenings as well. You can attach lights to your airplane, your flight lights, there's a good one.
Any further questions?
Among your members, you've got a list, and first off, did you mention that there were no drones?
Well, people do have drones. They're allowed to fly drones. But what we do not allow is for individuals to fly... When we say drones, let's... I think we should discriminate here. A drone is typically taken to mean an aircraft that has some sort of video onboard, and which people can then look through a video receiver to watch what the aircraft is doing. They're very common. You can buy them at the grocery store almost these days. So many, many people own them. People can use them recreationally to fly around the field. What we will not permit is for people to fly with these and fly them without a spotter. The Academy of Model Aeronautics has a very significant and serious set of rules about how you're allowed to fly these things. So you can fly them, but you have to fly them with... You have to fly them with someone with you, and those individuals have to be able to see that drone at all times. So in other words, it has to be line of sight. The individual who is with you has to be able to see that. So in case there is a loss of sight of that, you losing contact with that drone because of video issues, that individual has to be able to tell you where that is and be able to bring it back at all times. So those are the rules under which you can operate a drone. So that means we are not going to permit individuals to come out of the field, set up, and start flying without a spotter, and to operate out of line of sight. It's simply not permitted.
What is the average scale? I realize that you get from tiny foam planes to large-scale warbirds. What's... What would you say the average size of your models would be?
That's a fairly good question. An average aircraft will have about a three-foot wingspan, about a three-foot wingspan. We have a few people who have aircraft that can have wingspans as high as four or five feet. A number of our older flyers have aircraft that have wingspans of two and a half feet, but three feet to four feet, let's say, for instance. But we're on that range, usually, is what most people have.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Mr. Silver, you spoke earlier about sort of a learning curve somewhat, and talked about noise factor and flight pattern and this sort of thing.
Yes.
Is it fair, then, to assume that you had those concerns and complaints at the former location and didn't address those?
I will be absolutely certain, I will be completely honest with you. When this club was first formed, back in the early eighties and nineties, it was a different place in time. And it was a different set of individuals and a different world in which we lived. It was a crop-dusting airport, inactive at that. And the people who flew there were flying different kinds of airplanes. They were flying smaller kinds of airplanes. The technology was limited. Since then, we've had a technological revolution in model aircraft. A lot of people are flying larger aircraft with different kinds of motors, with different electronics. Things have changed. That particular location has become less active from a crop-duster perspective. The technology, the electronics, the people who fly have become, have all changed. That area has changed. People have moved in. Houses have been built. The club size has grown from a handful of guys flying on a Sunday morning to fifty-five people who are flying at all hours of the day. And I think what happened was, we outgrew the field. We were thinking and flying as if we were flying in, thinking in the nineties and in the early thousands. And we probably should have learned our lesson early on and reached out to the community more than we did. Not just the community of Person County in a way, although we tried to do that with these various programs that we did. We didn't think to the local community around us and say, "How can we actually change what we did, change how we do?" We were still thinking as if we were flying ten, fifteen years ago. It's all different now, and that's why we're here.
Further questions? Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Thank you, gentlemen, and gentle ladies.
There's four minutes and fifteen seconds left. Do you guys want to split it up, or would you like further?
Well, I can't tell more questions if you'd like to.
Would you like me to let you know when you got a minute left, or are you just going to...
Sure.
All right. Get started. State your name and your address, please.
I'm Peak Duddy, from Three-O-One Continental Drive in Durham. And I'm going to skip past what I was going to talk about on noise. On safety was one of the issues that was brought up. Our airplanes are not going to be over the properties of the surrounding residence, church. In fact, that distance, I didn't hear mentioned. We're seventeen hundred feet plus from the center of our property to the nearest residence or the church. On the safety issue, it was determined at another meeting that the thirty-some-odd years that we were flying over Earl Mills of the Whitfield Airfield, that there wasn't a resident that was aware of any damage or injury, damaged any property or any injury from our aircraft. One thing on the noise issue, our strongest, our loudest critics have been the hunters on both sides of our property. And from a noise standpoint, I figured, I pulled up the DB rating on a thirty-eight-six rifle. It's a hundred and fifty decibels, way over anything that we would ever come up with. Also, on the safety issue, I personally would worry more if I was coming in to live on the property around there of a stray bullet than a model airplane flown on our property. Probably rather biased in that regard. And when I was three, I got shot out of a sandbox with somebody shooting at a rabbit, and they got me. When it comes down to it, we're talking about a lot of things, the safety, the noise, issues like that. And what the decision is, is it better for RC flying on that property to be supervised and governed by a club and the backing of AMA? And I personally cannot come up with a good reason, any reason, that would make sense on not issuing us a permit. Could I ask, Lurch, would you like a few seconds? The... Again, an issue of safety. We're backed by two and a half million dollars of insurance through AMA. through AMA. Should there be an accident, we've got that kind of back, backup of coverage. I ask if our neighbors have anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. So you're the property owner?
Yes, sir. Another question that you asked, let me clarify. You asked about flying in the boundaries. That's our responsibility, flying on the property that we have. We, we can overfly other property if we've got the permission of the, the other property owners.
So there's a lot between you, there's actually another lot between you and where the church is located. Another piece of property, another tract of land.
Yes, sir.
Where were you accessing? How would you get to this?
We come off right beside the church in our easement. There is, we are, where you are, there's nine properties that share the same easement. It's a fifty-foot wide access right beside the church, right in the back. And that church off of y'all's GIS is actually, it's almost ninety, it's a little over nineteen hundred feet from the center of that church, the center of our property, which is the closest residence around us. We're literally in the middle of nothing, nothing.
And this is the only tract that you own, so we have neighbors to your side of you?
Well, they're, they're all vacant, but it's just wood, like, it's all of it.
And it's actually being farmed now?
Yes, sir. It's all being, most, there's two tracts that hasn't been cut, timber that hasn't been cut, but everything else has been cut and brooded. Including our property was previously cut in two thousand thirteen by a portion of GIS. But it will be farmed, it will be, pay will be raised on that property, and, and that's why the grass runway to be maintained from outside of the parking lot that we were told we had to have, we were going to let it be grass also, but we lose that for stone.
Any further questions? All right. Here are none. We'll move to in opposition or against. And since we agreed to put it into record, we're gonna read the statement that was notarized, and that'll come out of the time that was allotted. We're gonna pass it out. I'll read the pertinent information. And there's three other speakers that would like to speak, so I'll get it started, and then we'll turn it over to the next one. I, Dwayne Jarvis Reeves, do hereby affirm that the information contained in this document are true and correct, signed the seven, uh, July twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen. And it's notarized and acknowledged. I purchased two tracts of property off Mount Harmony Church Road that are approximately twenty-nine acres in total in June of twenty-sixteen sixteen, after looking all around the area for nine months. My property line is shared with the line of the property being discussed tonight. I'm an electrical contractor, so I'm around the construction world all week with a lot of noise. Coming down to my property for a little quiet relaxation is priceless. We selected this property because it was secluded and quiet with a good distance from the main road. It was purchased for hunting initially and then to provide a second home for my family, and then to pass on to my three sons as a place where they can go. I enjoy teaching my three sons the tradition of hunting and the outdoors. It is a wicked world doing this with my kids, and it cannot be replaced by something else. I have only owned the land for just over a year and had no idea this would ever happen. The comment was made that TCRC at the previous meeting, that I live four hours away and I do my primary, do, as I do for my primary residence, but I also pay Person County taxes on the land, and is not the case for many of the members of the club. When we're in town on the weekend, my family and I support local restaurants and sometimes the hotels. What are we giving to Person County? What are they giving to Person County? My fear based on discussions I've had with other flyers and previous neighbors of this club is that the area would no longer be quiet or secluded. I spoke with a member of a club in Asheville that has approximately thirty-five members, and even with that number, there is someone there daily during the week and a lot of people on the weekends. TCRC has close to double this amount of members, so there will never be any silent time other than late at night. What impact would this have on the wildlife and the hunting in our area? What kind of outdoor recreation or camping would we still want to do on our property? While I understand that this club needs a place to meet and fly, what I do not understand is how they can purchase a small tract of land, fourteen acres, which is only enough to get started on, and then all of their flying is done over everyone else's property that lives on or owns nearby. Also, the property was not purchased by the club, it was purchased by an individual who is a member of the club. Mr. Duty lives in a country club in Durham, where he wanted his, this beside his house. They purchased this land to be their playground for their hobby and then go home to their quiet place. After researching the types of plane they use, some of these planes may have a hundred CC motors or twelve and a half horsepower, which can be related to the sounds of chainsaws and weed eaters. Would you want chainsaws and weed eaters flying over your homes in quiet areas? How would you and your family and neighbors feel if this was next door to them? Should they not be required to purchase enough property so that they could limit their flying zones to their own properly, property and not of their neighbors? Their property is only about five hundred and forty feet wide and eleven hundred and forty feet long, and is this supposed, and is supposed to have two fifty-foot buffers, but they cut all the way up to my property line. If they did a sixty-foot wide parking lot, grassy area before the sixty-foot wide runway, that only leaves about two hundred and forty feet in which to fly. A plane flying at a hundred miles an hour can easily be off the land in a matter of seconds. TCRC says that it's, it is eighteen hundred feet, but all their measurements are to the center of the property, but their flight zones are from the edge to edge. He gives proximities, there's twelve hundred feet from the church property and nine hundred feet from Mr. Luster's property. What happens if they crash in the standing timber in that area? That is a fire risk to the surrounding neighbors. These planes carry sixteen to thirty-two ounces of fuel in addition to batteries that can explode. Comments taken from the TCRCbuzzers.com website. Several planes ended up in the trees. A few times we lost planes in the clouds, pulled back the throttle, and just had to be ready when they appeared from somewhere. Gray overcast made seeing the planes and maintaining orientation more difficult. But the sound of three planes with four-stroke engines roaring away was pretty cool. The flight line was full much of the day, and the parking lot was full, and many had to park on the sides of the road. Stole the show and deafened everyone with this new turbine making several test runs. There are numerous more comments referring to crashes, crashes, and crashes. I'm also concerned about the impact of property values in the area surrounded the intending club location. Should they get approval to have this club? It takes away both the quiet and seclusion of my property. Would I even be able to sell my property for what I have invested in it? Would anyone even want to buy the property that would be looking at seven hundred-foot gravel parking lot and porta-potties? What happens to the other people that are already have homes in the area or the church next door? What are their options? I collected the additional information during a meeting last, after, during and after the last meeting. AMA, Academy of Model Aeronautics, no longer a member as of last week and still not listed on the website this week. AMA provided them with a lot of insurance that will no longer be valid. They had a jet turbine plane, which sounds like a real jet, come in two times to get their certification, but they said that he will not be back, what will be preventing this from happening. They have guidelines listed on the website for areas where they can, can and cannot fly. How hard is it when you're in the air to make sure that you're not flying out of the designated flying zones? It isn't like there's a beeper to go off to tell you that you're out. How often do they have guests that are not familiar with the flight areas? There wasn't a major problem for a while until the club kept growing, and now it is just too much for the neighbors to take. They don't, do not have a limit to the number of members per Mr. Mann, so it could grow inside and even a larger evasion. They do not restrict the number of planes in the air to four. They do restrict the number of planes in the air to four, but they do not restrict the number of planes that are on the ground running and making noise. The comment was made by several people that the majority of the members are not Person County residents and therefore do not pay Person County taxes. We cannot verify that because we do not have a members list. If this is not true, they should provide a membership list and their location to prove it incorrect. Do the people in Mount Harmony really know what will be coming? Here's the information obtained from neighbors near the previous location. One homeowner has lived there for two years and had five incidents. When the club started, it was two to three times a week, and now it is seven days from daylight to dark. There have been several experiences or incidents with club planes. They not only fly over their house, but they circle. Who would buy my house now? Numerous planes on the ground being adjusted or tuned, combined with the plane's air noise that are very loud. Night flying isn't often, but it does happen. Tried for the last couple of years to resolve the conflict and intrusions without filing a formal complaint, because they are nice people, but we do not want them in our neighborhood. We can no longer tolerate this noise. While the club has just over fifty members, it is not just the members, but it is their families and friends as well as, so there can be a lot of people there on the weekends. I was going to build a house on a vacant lot, on vacant land near this site, but my wife and I could not even talk without shouting while standing on my property. We would have built a nice house and paid Person County taxes. We will definitely not build on the site and maybe not even in Person County. The club has already been shut down in another part of the county in Hurdle Mills due to the nuisance. Why should they be allowed to move it to another part of the county or another smaller tract of land where they will have the same impact? Please stop this from happening so that we will not see our property values decrease and lose peacefulness that comes with owning in this area. I agree that they need a place to fly and that the club could have some positive impact on Person County, just not next door to people's homes and places of worship. What about the old landfill? What about some unused land out near the airport? What about county parks? Please help them find another solution that will give them a place to fly and let the rest of us keep our silence. And he has some other stuff from Corner and Associates in here, and it'll be up here if anybody wants to read it. Mr. James Tool?
Yes, sir.
Step to the podium and state your address and...
My name is James Tool. I'm from Roseland, North Carolina. I live five hours away from here. But I purchased land down here because it's a nice, quiet community. I didn't have any idea that anything like this would be coming into this community. Like Mr. Reeves said, it's not only gonna be the fifty-plus members that's in there, there'll be two or three people that's with each one of those members. So we're looking at probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred people in that area with all the noise and everything that's going on with it. I purchased this property to have a place to go, because I also do construction. And with the, do, I have a home improvement business, and I deal with a lot of stress related to this home improvement business. So this was my quiet place to get away. That's what I bought it for, to be able to come down here and have a place that I could come, bring my sons, my daughter, hunt on, and be fifteen hundred feet away from a main road. If I'd wanted property in the city, I'd come up here and bought in the city. But I wanted somewhere where it was quiet. And this is gonna, this is gonna really impact that community. I don't know that Mount Harmony really, that community there really understands what this will do. But they will be flying more than four planes there, and they'll probably have six or eight there on the runway waiting to take off. So I, I submit to y'all, would y'all want this in your backyard? I don't think that residents of Mount Harmony would, and I have seventeen, seventeen signatures to back that. Me and my son was working on, on a job about three weeks ago whenever the first plane in the zone meeting was, was here, and I took off time, and he took off time to come down here to that meeting, just as we took off time for my job to come down here to this meeting, because I think it's something that's really important. Because if we don't stop this, it's gonna, it's gonna tear that little quiet community up. But we were working on a job, and in where we were working at, there's about a four, about a mile valley right in there. There was one plane that was flying in that valley, and that plane was over four hundred and forty, fifty yards away from us, and we could still hear it every time that it moved. As it was flying around and around, back and forth, over and back, that plane was making a lot of racket. And I'm saying if that one plane's making that much racket, what's four and five up there gonna be doing? And talking about the drones, that's gonna be another problem there with the drones being in that area. What their feelings are to tell y'all folks is the president of the club has a wingspan of fourteen foot. His plane is fourteen foot wide. It's not three foot. And it's got a hundred CC motor on it. So you can imagine that fourteen-foot plane coming across the top of your house and losing control, and all the fuel that's in it and the batteries that's in it that's keeping it afloat, comes down on top of your house and probably burn it down. We are in a, we are in a residential neighborhood right there, and it is wooded. I have a piece of property, in fact, every bit of my fifteen acres that's right there on the south side of this property that's being proposed down is wooded, timbered. What's gonna happen whenever one of them planes comes down on my property and sets the woods on fire? There's gonna be a bunch of neighborhoods, neighbors right there in the neighborhood that's gonna potentially make them lose their house. They're saying that it's seventeen hundred and something feet away from residents? No. I know Mr. Luster, he's, he's nine hundred and something feet from the property. The church is less than a thousand the way the crow flies. If you take the way the crow flies or a plane, it's less than a thousand. There's another man that lives up on Circle B that's probably about less than a thousand feet. We have Mr. Baylock here that's probably about fifteen hundred to two thousand feet. These planes are not gonna stay right there on that fourteen acres, folks. They're gonna fly half a mile to a mile around. As long as they can see them, or if it comes out of the clouds, you know, they can catch it back, they're gonna fly as far as it'll go. And I also understand about the traffic and the people that this will generate into this normally quiet neighborhood. This will be used by someone in the club practically every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, from daylight till dawn. I've spoken with the club's member, president, Mr. Lurch, and he said it doesn't want to be used on the weekends, and from everything that I've researched on the club, that isn't accurate. It will be used on a daily basis by somebody in that club, if not several members in that club. They're talking about letting the church have Sunday service, and they're gonna start flying at nine o'clock. I think my church usually gets over about one. So the complaints from the people that have been affected, their last location at Hurdle Mills verifies the noise, the trespassing on other people's property to get their planes. I live five hours away. You think they're gonna call me and tell me that their plane went down on my property? No. They're gonna march right on up there and grab it. Ain't they? Even if I do have trespass, no trespassing signs of it. So they're gonna be trespassing to retrieve their planes, they're gonna be parking on other people's property. This will all be issues that has to be dealt with if this club is allowed to open up on this property. There'll be no quiet time anymore, as there would be constant noise, constant traffic, and people we know nothing about continuously using our fifty-foot access that I put in. My son and my, my sons and I actually built that road in there by hand and a little farm tractor. But we'll have a continuous traffic on that road. They've already messed the road up by putting, coming in there and clearing the property. They've cleared fourteen acres of property, not even, not put any kind of erosion control up on it. They never did anything except mess my road up. People be continuously coming back and forth, we know nothing about, wronging in and out. I don't know their members. I don't know the people that are associated with their members. And let's not to mention So Long Baptist Church, which is about twelve hundred feet, thousand to twelve hundred feet away. Would you want to have a wedding there? Your daughter's waiting? Your daughter's wedding or your son's wedding? Would you wanna have a funeral there with all this going on? I don't think so. I don't think they do either. I don't think it's fair for that community to be dealt such a blow with what they're trying to do. There are several dwellings within a thousand to twelve hundred feet. This is one, this was once a quiet, undisturbed community, but it'll be turned into a noisy, busy community that will no longer be peaceful. And I was planning on putting a home on that property myself to have somewhere that I could stay to come, come down here and relax with my family and stuff. I've already got a perk test in. I've got a septic permit on file in the Person County Environmental. But I don't know that I'm gonna do that if I can't sit on my back porch and have quiet and peace like what I wanted the property board to begin with. You know, he compares the noise level to you talking back and forth right here. Folks, that's just not the fact. That's far from the fact. You get a bunch of these planes up in the air and it's zzzzz all over the place, and you get three or four of them up there, and you got three or four different, you know, it's four, three or four different times there. So I want to ask y'all, if you don't mind, consider, would you want this in your neighborhood, in your back porch? Would you want this next to your church? This man right here is the deacon of that church, and he'll tell you that he don't want it right there behind that church. He's also a member of that community which lives within nine hundred feet of that property. So they want to give y'all this about it being seventeen hundred feet from the center of the property. Do you just go to the center of your property? No. They won't leave. They'll go all over that whole valley right there. So I just petition this commissioners to deny this request. There's a simple fact that this community will be in upheaval. The trash that's generated, the traffic that's generated, and the noise level that's generated will be intolerable. Thank you.
Ryan Tool, step to the podium and state your address. You got twelve minutes and fifteen seconds.
My name's Ryan Tool. I'm James Tool's son. I live in Penrose, North Carolina, which is four and a half, five hours away. As Mr. Dwayne and my dad's pointed out, the reason we come down here was to have peace and quiet. I also own a construction company back home. Yes, I drove five hours down here to be at this meeting, so I'm losing money and time from work also, where they were able to get off work this afternoon and come up here. So this is important to us. I've got a little girl that loves to camp, fish, hunt. I mean, she, she goes duck hunting with me all the time when I let her. And with this property, I can take her and not have to worry about her getting shot or something in the woods on public land. I just want to go over a few points that I've taken down and questions that I'm gonna ask y'all to keep in mind when considering this. As Mr. Duty said, he would rather have a plane out of control over his piece of property than somebody shooting a rifle. Anybody that has had any kind of weapons training knows better than if there's a residence, say off to your left, you don't shoot that way, whether there's a buffer or not. I don't care if it's two hundred yards away. By the state of North Carolina, you can't fire a firearm within a hundred yards of a residence. So even two hundred yards, which is double, I'm not gonna shoot that way. I'm not gonna shoot towards somebody's property. But as he said, he would rather have a plane go down. Well, that's fine. Okay, so let's put this in perspective. What if my little girl's out playing in the yard, and they're flying over there, and that plane comes down? Well, that propeller's still going and everything else. Well, if it comes down headfirst and it hits her, just right, it could chop her head off. Okay, so what's the difference then? I understand the firearm thing, but I have control over that. They don't. If a plane's going down, there's nothing they can do about it. So I mean, that's, that's my point on the plane versus the rifle. I'm not gonna shoot towards somebody, somebody's dwelling or even somebody's land that I know lives there or period. I mean, I'm just not going to because there's too many accidents. Yes, there's accidents that happen because people get careless and shoot and don't think about it. But we do, like I said, anybody that has any, anybody that showed them the right way and the wrong way of firearms has that acknowledgement, and it's not gonna do that. So there's fifty-five members in the clubs, in the club. There's no plans on a limit. So what's to say in a few years, how many, how many members are we gonna be looking at? It could double, triple. So they proposed a ten-foot-wide road, private road going back there on a fifty-foot easement. Okay, so even say you got fifty-five people coming back in there. What do you think, how you think it's gonna be trying to pass people on this road? You think the road's gonna stay maintained? No. You think they're gonna mess the ditches up? Yeah. And I mean, like I said, my kid might be playing. Well, if one of them comes flying down through there, and she's playing in the yard, and she tosses a ball, and it goes out the road. So there's a danger there also. And as has, has been proved tonight, over half the members don't even live within the county. So do you think they're gonna spend their money within the county or go back to their home county and eat, get gas, hang out with their friends? I mean, like I said, yeah, we live five hours away, but we come down, we, we visit Person County on a regular basis, and we spend money within the county, buying fuel, hotels, food, renting equipment, buying gravel to put on the road. I mean, yeah, it was, it was brought up in the last meeting that we had a little hog trail.
Seven minutes.
We had a little hog trail for a road back through there. And the thing about it is, is like I said, we own, I own my personal business, and I'm a small business. I do make money, but I, I don't make a lot of money. So I do, and we do, what we can, when we can. I know for a fact that we spent over five thousand dollars on this hog trail of a road, putting gravel, culverts, putting ditches in on the side of it to keep the erosion down, which now they've took a bulldozer through there and flattened it out, covered our ditches back there. So the erosion's going back into the creeks where it shouldn't be. And something else that kind of, I just wanted to bring before y'all that was brought up in the last meeting. The president stood before the planning and zoning committee and said, quote, "We will do whatever we want to, no matter if we're approved or not. Y'all cannot stop us." So I mean, what does that say? Yeah, they, they sit up there and say, well, we wanna work with the community. But when, when you stand up and say, well, we're gonna do whatever we want to, whether y'all like it or not, that's not working with the community. The president also has told us that they cannot fly within less than five hundred foot of airspace over anyone else's land without having permission to do so per their insurance. They're saying four hundred. So which one's the truth? Another thing on the church, the community, he stood up here last meeting and said, "If the church got out at eleven AM, we won't start flying at eleven AM." What if church runs over ten minutes? I've not been to a church that gets out at twelve o'clock or eleven o'clock on the dot every Sunday, not to mention if they've got special events. So I mean, that's another question to kind of keep in the bag of your head. This is their playtime. They come up here from surrounding counties, do their thing, go home. They don't have to worry about anybody else flying around their homes, their homes, where they go to relax and sit back and have quiet time. This is our second home. This is where we come from, come to after working and being around construction and the loud noises and stuff, to get relaxation and to just kind of wind down, get away from the hustle and bustle a lot. But if they do, if they get approved on this, we're gonna lose it. I mean, what's the point of even coming down here? I'm not gonna come, I'm not gonna drive five hours, and I don't think anybody in this room's gonna drive five hours to come down or go somewhere and have to listen to that seven days a week, daylight to dark. I mean, they said. And in the other meeting, they were saying, no, that we don't hardly fly on weekdays. And then somebody else would get up there and say, yeah, we do because we're retired. Some of us are retired, some of us work swing shifts. So there's no, there's not gonna be any quiet time. So what's the point of coming down here? I mean, that's what we come down here for.
Three and a half minutes.
It was brought up a minute ago that, and this was told to us by the president when they first bought the property, he come and met with us. They have to have permission if a plane goes down to come get it on someone else's property. Well, like, like's been pointed out to y'all, we live five hours away. So does Dwayne. We're all from the mountains. Do you think they're gonna call and say, hey, we had a plane go down? We need, we need y'all to, we need permission to come get it? Or we have to personally come down here and get it? Do you think they're gonna wait five hours for us to get here? No. They're just gonna go and get it and go on like nothing happened. Another thing on this plane, if it crashes, and this was said in the last meeting, which I'm a volunteer fireman, I have been since I was sixteen, I'm twenty-six now. These planes carry fuel and even batteries. We've got an airport in our county, in my fire district, that is a single person to maybe four people capacity. We have had plane crashes there. I will tell you what heat and jet fuel can do. But it was said in the last meeting that the heat off the engine will not combust the fuel that those planes are carrying.
Two minutes.
That's not true because I have fought plane fires. It is highly flammable. Jet fuel is highly flammable than regular gasoline. So I'm gonna leave y'all with that. I hope that, and ask y'all to deny them that, and also to do something as far as, well, we're gonna do whatever we want to anyhow, put some restrictions on them. Thank y'all.
One minute and thirty-two seconds.
I'm gonna take one. Donald Meadows, eighty-four thirteen, Casson Road, Bahamut.
I'm gonna gavel you when it hits, and we gonna stop.
Go ahead. Donald Meadows, eighty-four thirteen, Casson Road, NC State Bull Reserve, tax in front of my house. They put in land payment, somebody about it. You go out there in front, I'm a thousand yards from him. Walk us out in the yard, no peace, no quiet, no nothing. Second damn week, you gonna crash in the room. I can't even go buy my own house and get relaxed. Can't go to my swamp pond, go fishing, go fly in planes. How would you like it? Out on.
All right. Thanks, sir. Beat the time, too. All right, that's all in opposition. Do you have any questions for anybody before we close the public hearing?
I noticed it was mentioned this gentleman here is from Salome Church. I didn't know if he missed the time to sign up, but I didn't know if he wanted to have anything to say in a few minutes or two.
We got one minute left by the directions. If you'd like to speak for a minute.
He was a little late on signing the paperwork. Go ahead, Mr. Lester.
One minute. Can you say it in a minute? Yeah, he didn't swear in either, so Laurie, if he's gonna speak, we gotta swear him in. I state your name.
Lester Harris.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Yes.
That I will tell the truth, the whole truth?
Yes.
And nothing but the truth as testimony?
Nothing but the truth as testimony.
Offered in the public hearing?
Offered in the public hearing.
For a request by Pete Duty?
For a request of Pete Duty.
With the Tri-County Radio Club?
With the Tri-County Radio Club.
For a special use permit?
For a special use permit.
To operate a recreational?
To operate a recreational.
Radio-controlled model?
Radio-controlled model.
Airplane Flying Club?
Airplane Flying Club.
On fourteen point oh three acres?
On oh three five.
Fourteen point zero three.
Fourteen point five zero three.
Acres off State Road seven twenty-one, seventeen twenty-one.
Off State Road seventeen twenty-one.
Mount Harmony Church Road?
Mount Harmony Church Road.
Tax map and parcel? A ninety-eight dash one ninety-one?
Eight ninety-eight dash one ninety-one.
In the rural conservation?
In the rural conservation.
Zoning district.
Zoning district.
All right. And I'm gonna hit the gavel when the minute's up. You don't have long. Get it all in.
Okay. Just go ahead and speak now. Well, through the commissioners and all who's gathered here today, I'm speaking to reinforce what Mr. Tool and the other gentleman has said, and I've been here before at the first meeting, and I understand the, the, what they're saying about the planes. And I, I know for a fact that they're not gonna stay over that acreage of land that they purchased. And our church hours are really from nine forty-five in the morning on Sunday till about twelve thirty. That includes Sunday school, eleven o'clock service. And that's, at various times, there's programs in the afternoons.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions?
Did I get his address?
State your name. Name and address.
Lester M. Harris, forty-five fifty-four, Mount Harmony Church Road, Rouge, North Carolina, two seven five seven two. And I'm the closest house to the church.
Any further questions?
Does Wednesday, church have Wednesday service? And if so, what time?
They have Wednesday Bible study at twelve noon till about one. And like on Saturdays, they have choir rehearsals. One will be at eleven o'clock, the other one probably start about one. That's on the second and fourth Saturday. And there, there are other programs that I'm gonna try to mention. Funerals, you never know when.
Any further questions or discussion?
If I was to look up your club, who'd be the club contact you have? Like, is it listed on the website, so the president? And you reside?
Twenty-seven fifteen, Hurdle Mills, Round Road.
It was stated earlier that somebody had a plane that had a fourteen-foot wingspan. Is that true or untrue?
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have one question, Ms. Oakley?
No.
Ms. Oakley? Did I understand correctly that Planning and Zoning rejected this twice?
They had two different sites. The first site was the hurdle mill site that they referenced. That was a different parcel that went for a condition use permit to board of adjustment. And then you have this case that went for a special use permit to planning board, and then it's here before you tonight.
Rejected again. Okay, thank you.
Are we gonna come out of closed session then talk to her, or do we need to talk to her while we're in public hearing? Go ahead, Jim.
Do you know how far it is from the church to the property?
The church to the property? I do, if I could get IT to put the presentation back on the screen.
I got a picture over here on, on this, but it didn't tell me how many feet it was.
It's like sixteen?
Right.
No, that's not it.
Four.
So the church is, and somebody found incorrect to the, the deacon, I believe the church is this parcel right here.
The church is, yeah, eight ninety-eight twenty.
Uh-huh. So just looking at, when staff measured, this was two hundred feet, I mean, excuse me, two thousand feet. So I would guess a little over a thousand feet to the church, to the edge of the property.
And the easement, is it growl? It is growl?
Partial.
Partial. And about how many feet is that to the property?
The total length is about twenty, twenty-two hundred feet, twenty-five hundred feet, somewhere around that.
And how much of that would you say is growl?
Probably about a percent. Probably about, uh, a third of it. And I had to use over-size stone because it was wet place in the beginning of it, so we had to put, uh, we put like, we put like, uh, thirty or forty thousand pounds in that one area.
On here, where is your property?
My property is eight ninety-eight one ninety-two.
Okay.
Out on the southeast side.
Are you here? Here's the church. Are you here?
That's the house. That's not the church. That's the, the first one is, you tap, eight ninety-eight one oh-nine is a home, right?
That's, that's Mr. Lester's.
Yeah.
Oh, the church.
No, there is no home.
The church is here.
Church is eight ninety-eight twenty.
What is the road?
The gravel road right now?
No.
That's the church.
That's the church.
Yeah, okay.
His house.
Doesn't it look like a house right there to your left? Eight ninety-eight one oh-nine?
That's it.
That's Mr. Lester.
Right.
He's approximately nine hundred feet from the beginning of eight ninety-eight one ninety-one.
Further questions or discussion?
All right, so what stops Mr., the property owner, Mr. Duty? What stops him from flying his plane now?
As his personal plane with friends? Nothing.
What stops him from inviting lurch? I heard him call your name.
Nothing.
Okay. Now, if we were to, uh, approve this, could we take it away at any time? Or could we put a timeframe on the approval? Could we permit it for a year, two years, five years? Or once we permit it, it's there forever?
The attorney may want to answer. I have seen conditions placed where there were time periods on previous permits as a condition.
And so would that even come into, in the case of prohibiting, uh, since they applied for an actual, I guess the term would be a flight club or whatnot, could we prohibit flying at certain times?
Yes, you could make that as a condition. I understand the applicant would have to agree to the condition.
That's fine, but, yeah.
Yes.
And then, um, you all recommended a gravel parking lot?
Yes, they requested a gravel parking lot under a provision in the zoning ordinance, so it would be required for them to do ten-foot wide gravel.
I thought I heard them say that, that they were being made to, like that was a condition for the planning board, or did they request a parking lot?
They requested gravel. Our ordinance actually requires pavement.
Okay.
So they requested gravel to come in all the way, ten feet wide from Mount Harmony Church, all the way down, all the way to their parcel, and then have the gravel parking lot with the ten parking spaces with the program.
But that will be up to us if we could say no parking lot, make it put the gravel on the access road. Could we?
The ordinance requires a minimum of ten parking spaces. I don't know if the board could take away?
But if we can waive it for being pavement to gravel, we can waive it for being nothing.
There's a provision in there?
They could just line them off.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussions? Unless you're asked a question, sir. All right. Here are no other questions or discussion. I entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
It's public.
Excuse me, public hearing?
Sorry, ma'am.
All in, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed? And is there any consideration, item number three, for, to grant or deny the request of Pete Duty with the radio-controlled club for special use permit to operate a recreational radio-controlled airplane? And I'd like to, uh, make a statement before we move any further in discussion. I have a, uh, record of voting with our local planning and zoning board. We put those people in place to look at findings of fact as a quasi, uh, judicial board, and, uh, they came back with a four-o decision, uh, to deny the request, and so, uh, I tend to stick with their decision. So I'm gonna just say that upfront.
And I'll say the same, uh, along those lines. If, uh, we don't respect the opinion of planning and zoning, we don't need them. I'll go along with that statement.
Well, I know, I'm not saying I'm for or against it right now, but I will, I've made this comment in the past about the planning board is that they are the appointed board, and that I like the fact that, uh, things come to us afterwards just because we are an elected board, and so we can be held accountable by the people. And, uh, so I like us being a buffer between the people and an appointed board. So, and I'm not gonna say I always agree with them.
Any further comments, concerns?
I guess, I guess my biggest concern is for the church. I understand the funerals and I understand the church's operation.
So what would the pleasure of the board be?
You know, I guess ten years on this board, one of the first things I heard was you leave people, children, pets, and property lying alone, and, you know, we're kinda getting on the verge of discussing property rights right here. I think all of us have, at a time, wanted to purchase property to do what we wanna do on it, rather be hunting, fly a plane, train dogs, whatever it is you, whatever it is have you, you know? And, uh, so maybe I'm a little further to the right. Kyle, you can quote me on that. I'm a little further to the right when it comes to property rights and telling people what they can and cannot do. Uh, I understand this, this area and what it's zoned for and zoned as. But I would make a motion to approve them for two years prohibiting them from flying on Sundays from nine to one, and would ask that they would be ever so kindly to give the church a contact person to where if they could contact, be it special events or funerals, and hopefully they will respect the church's request of maybe, uh, not flying during those times, especially on a funeral. And if that's, and I would also, uh, not require them to do a gravel parking lot, but I would require them to grapple that access road.
All right, we have a motion on the table to, uh, give a two-year permit, prohibit flying on nine to one on Sundays, be considerate of the church for special events, and would you say contact, having a contact that the church could do?
I think the contact person would be given to the church, to contact if they have a funeral. And this gives us two years to where, let's say they're not respecting, you know, funeral or flying old people's property, or we're having issues, we can then prohibit them. And, uh, the only thing I did not like on their presentation was the without a public venue or model aviation, unsupervised model flying could be. It was almost like they would, it was said earlier, they would do it regardless. But I do do my homework, and I did look up the AMA safety rules, and one of those, and the very first one, I think one B was they are restricted from flying planes where they are prohibited. And so I think if we ever had an issue, we obviously can make a statement to their national association, which they are charter member of.
Okay. So, uh, motion for a two-year permit?
And have them grapple that road, grapple that access road.
Prohibited, uh, fly from Sunday from nine to one. Uh, if they have special events, they need to have a contact number to the church so that the church can contact them to, uh, delay or postpone any flying, and not required to, uh, have the gravel parking space as specified in the planning and zoning's, uh, plans that were shown up here earlier. Is there any discussion on this motion?
And to gravel the access road.
And gravel the access road. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of granting the permit is spoken. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
No. Doesn't pass. Any more discussion?
Next item.
All right, here are none. I would, uh, like to make a motion that we deny their request per our planning and zoning board as they had seen fit. Any discussion on that motion? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor of denying the request? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Informal comment period. Oh, excuse me, uh, item number three, A, that was added to the agenda, Ron is gonna report out on the Carolina Sun Rock and, uh, Tunnel Creek, uh, appeal.
This, this morning, Judge Lambeth in the Superior Court had a hearing on the appeal of Tunnel Creek from the decision of the Board of Adjustments. That he didn't, he heard arguments for about an hour and a half, made no decision because he wanted to read the briefs and read the record. The decision will come whenever the judge decides he wants to issue it. The expectation is within a week or ten days, but it may be longer than that before he issues it. The issue here was whether or not the Person County Planning Department made the correct decision when they ruled that Sun Rock's, uh, movement within the area where they had a special use permit of some facilities was a minor variation or a major variation from the special use permit. If it is a minor variation, then there is no necessity for getting any amendment to the special use permit. The sole question before the, the Board of Adjustments was, was that a correct decision? The Board of Adjustments decided that in fact the planning director staff had made the correct decision, therefore upheld her decision. Tunnel Creek appealed from that, and that was the issue this morning before the Superior Court judge. If the Superior Court judge rules in favor of Sun Rock, which is in fact in favor of the decision of the Board of Adjustments, then there is no further action required. This board would have no authority to do anything. It is only, uh, for the judge to decide if in fact that was the correct decision. If the judge rules that it was a major variation and not a minor variation, the effect would be that, uh, Tunnel Creek would win, Sun Rock would be authorized to come back and ask for an amendment to their special use permit. This was all under a special use permit, in fact, two that occurred and was granted by this board in two thousand five and two thousand six after all the required public hearings. Uh, I think that there is still some consternation of the people around the area, but as a legal matter, you would have no authority to do anything unless Tunnel Creek wins the appeal. There is some expectation that whoever wins, the losing party will attempt to appeal to the North Carolina Court of Appeals, so this matter may be going on for several more months. Questions?
So the short version is we don't know anything till the judge gives the.
That's right.
Short answer is wait for the judge's decision before you decide what else. Anything?
We should ask for that short version.
Well, you know, he's getting paid by the hour.
Any further questions or comments concerning South Carolina Sun Rock and Tunnel Creek? Hearing none. We move on to informal comments. We have a period set aside.
No one signed up.
And no one signed up, so we moving that off the agenda. Item number four, discussion, adjustment, and approval of the consent agenda. Is there any adjustments or discussions of the consent agenda?
So I have one question. The tennis courts, is that the old tennis courts, the new tennis courts, or what?
Uh, what's, at the high school? Uh, Dr. Peterson, did you wanna?
That would be the old tennis courts. It's the top, the top, there's four up there. We do two, and then make it landing area for, um, touch the seat with, um...
Gotcha. Any further discussion or adjustment? What is the pleasure of the board?
Waiting for approval.
Motion on the table. Is there any other further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. New business. Item number five, resolution of intent to lease property at the old Helena School to Piedmont Career Academy Incorporated. Uh, Ron Akut.
Mr. Chairman and Board, I am presenting this to you as a matter of information, not as a matter of advocacy. Uh, Dr. Daniel, uh, is here, and he will present to you, uh, with your approval, more substantive reasons for the issue before you. What I was asked to do was to work with Dr. Daniel and the staff to develop an intent to take action so that Dr. Daniel might move forward if you approve in his application for charter school. The resolution simply states that the old Helena School would be, it would be your intent to lease that school to the Piedmont Career Academy. The spokesman and organizer of that charter school is Dr. Daniel. You, would be your intent to lease that to that school for the purpose of a special charter school, which would emphasize work readiness. And in our examination, we spent a substantial amount of time with Dr. Daniel and the Recreation Director and the General Services Director to preliminarily work out how a joint use would work. The details are not before you. This is just an intent to continue to work out the details, but a generalized intent to move forward with this issue so that Dr. Daniel can make his application to the state for the charter school. Mr. Chairman, if you and the board desires, Dr. Daniel can give you lots more information.
Would you like to speak?
Only if you have questions.
Anybody got any questions for Dr. Daniel?
Somebody expresses this, oh, that's nobody.
I don't know about questions, I've got comments. I don't know if they're really.
Let's get the questions for Mr. Daniels, and then we go to comment session. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Daniel?
How many?
Would you step up here, please? Yes.
Get you on the mic so everybody can hear you when we go to YouTube.
I've not often been accused of not being able to be heard.
How many board, what size board? Have you got a board at this point in time?
There are six of us right now.
Six board members?
Yes, sir.
And, and have y'all got funding already? Any type of funding?
Not yet. Have to, you have to be approved for a charter before you get, no, that's not even true there. You have to actually open, be approved for a charter and then open the school before you actually get your first funding from the state.
Are these board members local people or who are they were?
Yes, all local.
Local to Person County?
All of them live in Person County except one who is a Person County native but lives now in Northern Durham County.
How do you propose to fund the renovations? How do you propose to fund the renovations prior to opening and receiving the state?
That's part of the, the finance, the finance portion of the, of the, uh, the budget preparation that we put together for the, for the application. We are partnering with Charter Success Incorporated in Durham. They have a, a business with a, a market for charter schools and they've worked with other charter schools in the past. They worked with Falls Lake Academy when I was the founding principal there to set up, to seek out and set up and manage the financial aspects of the, of the program and the program delivery. And they are involved in the, in that part of it as well. So they would help us set that up. It's, it's a fairly standard practice to do that. Most new startups are either going into existing schools or, or are building new, building brand new facilities. So in our case, we're not looking to build a brand new facility, although it would be possible to finance that if we decide to do that. That's not, that's not our first choice.
So you're before us today just asking for a space basically so that you can go forward with the state to try to get a charter? Is that the way I understand it?
That's right. We, now we don't, the, the state does not require you to have a space already designated and already approved when you submit the charter. But it goes a long way when you do have one, that, that you already have a space and that you've already set the, the wheels in motion to be able to move into the spaces you designated. So we would like to be able to say in the charter application that we've already secured this intent to move forward with the county commissioners, and that's the way it will state. It's not going to say that we have a, an executed lease.
So you could conceivably go before the state and not get a charter and then you wouldn't need the space?
That's correct.
What happens if you get the charter and then we decide not to lease the space?
Then we would be up creek and we would have to go back to the drawing board in terms of looking for space.
And that's a question maybe to the attorney, how binding? Is the language in this agreement?
Uh, this is not legally binding. I think Dr. Daniel understands that, but it would state that you're sort of a gentleman's agreement to move forward if you can, but if you decide you can't, you can't.
Mr. Chairman? I've talked to several Board of Education members. Of course, we pretty much looked at something several years ago and ended up doing the program with PCC at that time, but we've got a new Board of Education that was elected, what, less than six months or roughly six months ago now, new superintendent. And I think they've got some ideas and, you know, I, I, I don't not support what Dr. Daniel's doing, but I would think we need to give them an opportunity to, to make some type of presentation to us too. And they get the opportunity within the next few months or so. So, you know, I like to see us table this until we be, until we are able to hear from them too.
Way I understand it is he's got to put his charter together and send it off and he needs this before the end of the month. And one of the things I'd like to bring up since you brought that up is I, uh, I met with the, uh, doctor and we discussed the situation and when Dr. Daniels came before us to look at this space, there was no works in place. There was no agreement between us and the Board of Education.
That's correct.
As far as I know, there was no intent at the time. And so, uh, we walked over the property, he looked at it and asked if we'd bring it before the Board and so, as I looked at it, it was an opportunity for the county to have someone move into that space that's been empty for quite a few years. Should they get their charter, uh, they will have in the language that they'll make the repairs necessary to make it a usable space and that if anything ever came, if this Board agrees, if anything ever happened to the charter, then it would revert back to the taxpayers of Person County. So having said all of that, we, uh, have looked at both sides. And if I understand correctly, Dr. Peterson, the, there's not an intent for possibly the next five years maybe? Just to have anything done out that way? I know you're new and
No, if I may.
Certainly, stand up.
I think the whole issue before me when I got here was that the STEM Academy being in the old Alena site. And it was my understanding that the interim predecessor before me pulled that from the table. I don't necessarily agree with that. I do think that we can utilize the Alena site. I think we can utilize the travel equipment. Either with an extension of our support services with lending libraries, preschool, which we don't have any, we don't have enough particular areas. So I wouldn't go out and put five years on the table. I would say that what you find in, in our lottery money, we have pulled back money to start the process of procuring additional funds through the Tier One. Opportunity is now in the appropriations bill and we would be seeking approval for that so that we can utilize the site of Alena District.
Any further questions, comment?
Well, my comment is somewhat simple. Granddaddy always said they won't make it anymore land, and so that's one reason our farm is 99 years old. And I'm respective of the fact that I'm just one-fifth of a vote dealing with county property. But it is county property that's sitting in part of the county which we at one time assumed we were going to have a lot of growth. I think arguably now it's probably the largest populated area for our county. And I'm just not apt to right now to giving that away. And that's to say really to anybody, I mean, I don't know what we may need out in the southern end of the county. Be it a STEM project, uh, when I was at school, we always thought we was going to have another high school out there sometime or another. Or county services out in the southern part of the county, since it is heavily populated. So that would be my reasoning and then I would also say to Dr. Daniel, I, I haven't heard much about what's going to go on out there. I know he's had contact, I think with you, Mr. Chairman, but I haven't heard any plans, ideas, uh, no more than what the two times prior to this he's been to the meeting. And so I would say I have no knowledge of the application of what's going to go out there.
Going back a few years, I think the original, um, intent of the school board in transfer of ownership to the county was for development of some type. And not, it was not primarily schools, that was not the intent. It was business sort of oriented, to be a community center and some shops and things of this nature. I was part of that, uh, original thought. Then there was a plan developed to, um, by Dr. Bartlett, I believe, and maybe Dr. Kortner, I'm not sure. It may have been later, for a STEM program. And, uh, and during the time there, this transition of the former superintendent here, Dan Holloman, and then, um, Dr. Bartlett leaving, it, it was sort of in limbo. But I, I have to sort of question the intended purpose of this facility. And I understand that, um, Dr. Daniel has a background in, in charter schools, but, um, when we're talking about in Person County, a work readiness program, I quite frankly don't know of a better work readiness program than the CTE program at the two middle schools and a high school. They would classify a term that in different language, but that's what it's all about. The career and technical education programs in those schools, and in particular the high school, are part of the most noted in North Carolina. And those programs have been well-recognized through state and national competitions for, I can go back as far as the early eighties before you.
That, uh, Four and eight.
So those programs are there, they're certified, they're well-established. Graduation rate of the career and technical education students at Person High School is in the upper ninety percentile, ninety-seven percent maybe of students enroll in those programs graduate high school. And, uh, bottom line for career and technical, technical education is, um, that's what Dr. Daniel referred to as work readiness. So I sort of see a duplication there of what we're doing, just that possibly a different age group or a different set of kids. But, um, historically, again, we have a, a very well-known and established, uh, programs, program that teach, um, work readiness and, and that's broad and wide and does a tremendous job already. So I'm, I question the feasibility of having another school that would essentially teach the same thing.
Further comments, discussion?
Getting back to Jimmy, what you were talking about was, you know, and, uh, with the new Board, I think it's one thing that we have to look at. Those have been on this Board for some, some time. Typically, when you have, we've had changes in the school system from Buckner to Kortner to Holloman and our new superintendent today. You know, whatever happened in the past happened in the past and we can't hold people to what had happened in the past in their own positions. I think you need to give opportunities as well. I would say if the school system has an, uh, a need or an idea for this, we need to hear about it sooner than later because we have someone here now that is interested in it. I don't know how quickly something, a proposal could be put on the table for us, but I do think we, with what Commissioner Clayton has said, that we do need to hear both sides to it, on it. So, and I, and that's me putting the ball into y'all's court on it and I don't know how quickly that turnaround time could be. I understand the need. Dr. Daniel's need too, but this is a, you know, this is a historic property which means a lot to many people in the Timberlake area. And so we want to make sure that we're doing the, the right thing and we're looking at both, both options on it. So, um, again, that's me passing the ball off to the Board of Education. But, you know, if, if, if there's no proposal coming, you know, we need, we need to know about it, so. And, uh, so I would, I don't know how quickly some type of, um, presentation can be made, some type of, uh, vision, you know, um, Dr. Peterson, we, we talked about vision the first time you got here, you had a, you had a, you had a vision. And so I don't know if this is part of your vision, but certainly giving you the opportunity, I'd like to at least give you an opportunity to, um, share it if it is part of it.
Any further discussion or comments?
Y'all have said the former superintendent's name twice now. I don't want to hear it a third time. I'd be like Candyman, he may appear.
Which one? You talking about Buckner? He's selling onions, saying stop now.
Hearing no further discussion or comments, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Just making a motion to deny? Jimmy said table, but I don't
Make the motion?
Make the motion to table it.
Until? Do you want a specified period of time or do you want to just leave it open-ended until somebody brings it?
See when the school Board can work with us.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to leave it open-ended table?
One, one question is, how soon can the school Board work to getting us a presentation?
I'm sure we'll meet Dr. Daniel's deadline, which is in the month.
And that's the reason, I mean, I think if
Well, if you have opened-in the table, it doesn't come back up until somebody brings it off the table. So there's not a specified date.
I like that idea.
So someone would have to bring it back off the table, put it on the agenda.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the table to table item number five, the resolution to, of intent to lease the property to the old Helena School at Piedmont Career Academy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, and all in favor of putting it on the table, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. All right, passes. Item number six, consideration to change the November thirteenth, twenty seventeen, regular scheduled Board meeting to November the twentieth, twenty seventeen, to accommodate local government day. No further. Let me look at my calendar first. All right, there's a motion on the table to move the, uh, date from November thirteenth to November twentieth, and I'm assuming that'll be a nine o'clock meeting? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item number seven, Board of Adjustments, Mr. Chairman.
So since we've, uh, had our meeting where we did appointments and we had several Boards that, uh, were not, no applicants, I've been beating the bushes, so to speak. And so Kenneth Perry is willing to serve on the Board of Adjustment. I put his name in the form of a motion.
All right, we got a motion on the table for Kenneth Perry to be on the Board of Adjustments. Is there any further discussion?
I think they still leave them short one, don't they? Aren't they too short?
We're currently short one, um,
Remember, you need an alternate.
We have an alternate member who's indicated he would like to become a regular member. I advise him he needs to apply. And then we have two other vacancies.
So we could fill this one, then your alternate, and then just fill the alternate.
Is there any discussion on a motion?
Who is your, who is your alternate?
James Thomason.
I'm, I'm, um, can I? What I need to do, amend my motion?
To make both of them?
Kenneth Perry and
James Thompson.
James Thompson.
As regular members?
Full members, yeah.
All right, so we got a motion on the table for Kenneth Perry and Mr. Thomason to be full members of the Board of Adjustments and we would have to fill a alternate position? All in favor, is there any discussion?
And that's okay with that an application from him?
Since there's no competitive bids.
Right, good.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Chairman's report, and I don't have it here in front of me, I apologize, I was going to write it down. But we've got a, uh, conference call, Skype meeting that Stewart is going to be a part of on the eleventh at one o'clock, I think. So go back, they, we got the email, uh, and Stewart was asking that we try to sign into the conference call. I think he gave us the economic development.
I can forward it to everybody.
Yeah, forward it back out again, Heidi. So he was just asking that if we had the opportunity, I think it's August the eleventh at, at one PM.
Okay.
And, uh, listen in on some economic development news that is going on, the conference call. I heard that, I wasn't in town, but I heard that National Night Out was a roaring success and I saw it in the paper, so I appreciate all of the folks that went there and all of the people that participated, even the volunteers that showed up to, to be a part of the workers and not just, uh, coming to visit and enjoy the evening, so that's all I've got. Manager's report.
I hadn't found that from Stewart, but I will certainly resend that. We had set up meetings this week with the volunteer fire department, uh, fire chief, as well as the Board President. And unfortunately Vice Chairman Powell's not able to attend, so if anybody would like to join us, we could have one other commissioner sit in on those meetings. They are Thursday and Friday. And I can send the schedule to anyone who might be interested will be in the conference room. This was to begin talking about funding needs and begin thinking about funding for next year in advance of the upcoming budget process. That's what we're working on. And then also the association conference is this week, Thursday and Friday in Durham. For those of you who are planning to attend, I'm going to try to do both.
Saturday.
And Saturday, that's right. It goes Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Saturday's the big dinner as well. That's all we had.
Commissioner Jeff?
I'd like to invite you all to an ice cream party that the Person County Social Services Board is throwing for our DSS employees. It is, I'm buying the toppings, so you know, if you got any specific toppings that you would like, just let me know. And that would be at three o'clock at the FEMA shelter. We do that once a year in replace of a board meeting. We've been doing that just to help with morale up there at DSS since they are small. We know whenever, anytime there is some economic stress to a county, they're one of the ones that's hit hardest, of course, August 30th, Wednesday.
Time.
Three.
Commissioner Perry? How's the baby?
The baby is well.
Long's work.
You want us not to adjourn so you stay here a little longer?
No, 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 there's no escaping it, Ray. There's no escaping it.
Commissioner Powell?
No report.
No report. Hearing no other discussion, not entertaining motion to adjourn. Someone, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.